I have a motion to approve November 4th, 2014 WCCA Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Angelo, seconded by Counsel Fornin. Roll call.
Mayor Candela?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Obstained.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel PC?
Yes.
Reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, Permanent Project Building Committee.
Permanent project met last week, and in regards to the Stanley T. Williams Community Center, the project is winding down to its final stages, and there are several items that they will be looking at based on the money that's left in the account from the steep grants that we have received. The two major things that we're looking at are a new sign out front and also additional lighting on the building. And there's a potential for a credit from Wallingford Electric for approximately forty percent of the lighting fixtures itself on that. So those are the two major things, and then we also have to reimburse back to the Board of Ed the cost of John Florio of helping put in the additional bathroom we put in the senior section and to credit back Brady Marola for the work that his guys did, which I think is approximately somewhere around $5,000, $5,500. Also, on the agenda for tonight, you'll see there's the contract for Hibbert and Rosa for the TBS roof project. The Permanent Project Building Committee is recommending that architect, which was the same architect that did the high school roof project, who worked very well, did a good job, and he's on a state contract bid also. And he is estimating at this time that it's possible that we could probably get about a fifty percent of the building with a pitched roof, and so he will be doing that as part of his renditions of the, when he does his architectural work and when it goes out to bid so that we can see. And the other question that came up in regards to that was, at the high school, we had replaced all of the unit ventilators on the building when we did the roof project, and they are looking to do that again. The building committee thought that that was a good idea. It's not reimbursable by the state, but we used the money from the roof project to do that. Originally, at the high school, it was estimated in the capital project for approximately $60,000, and it ended up costing us, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of $35,000 to $40,000 because we were able to buy them off of state contract bid, and then the school had John Florio connect them. So I think that is something that we need to look up at also when they redo the TBS project. And, oh, on the auditorium, at this point in time, a lot of the work that has been done to the building in regards to the water coming in, coming up from the floor, it has been determined by NAFIS and Young and all of the work that they have done that it is not coming up through the cement. It is more coming in from underneath because the doors are agreed and there were caulking issues. So at this point in time, their recommendation was to wait for approximately a year since some of this work has been done now to see once if they still continue to have the water problems. If they do not, with the fixes that have been done, then the work that would need to be done is just to retile the lobby, to retile the lobby floor. So Permanent Project is not really going to be addressing that issue for at least six to nine months.
Thank you, Ruth. Item B, Economic Development Commission.
Yes, the Economic Development Commission met last night, was a good meeting in terms of recapping the charrette that took place, the second one, and Andre from Yale was there to recap, and what he's going to do, the next steps going forward, is to continue to work on a report, draft report, that they're going to get back to the Economic Development Commission for their comments as they prepare a presentation. The schedule is such that they'd like to come before the town council, and they're meeting in January, January 20th meeting, and to then leave that draft report open and not finalize until the council has had a chance to hear the presentation and look at the report, and then from there, turning that or taking elements of that report and to begin working on an RFP document, which will basically, you know, have the criteria we're looking for. And I think the caution is just, the commission talked about it last night, caution is that it's not carved in stone, you know, there's got to be, you've got to have some flexibility to think about the fact that any developer, whoever responds to the RFP, is going to respond to the RFP, look at the criteria, but again, there's nothing specific that says we have to have, you know, a certain look or feel or a certain business, so to speak. The developer, in terms of a process of selecting a preferred developer, will drive, will drive it after the selection and contract process. So it's still very much a work in progress, but after January, looking at a RFP for the spring and then putting that out there to developers. The commission asked that I speak with a local research, resource in Bert Sacco, which I did and had a long conversation with him today. He's very knowledgeable, very helpful, and will come to sit with the commission to guide. He's been through several of these development-type processes, and he has actually given the sample or a template from Breachport. We have others from New Britain and a few other places, but the commission will be doing its due diligence and looking and reviewing that process. I also want to give to you, to handle the council, the analysis of appraisal that Berkshire Hathaway's had did, I've done, has done for us on the appraisal of the property at 1599 Foxen Road, just to have a figure in terms of a value of what, before we get into this process. And one of the questions that the council is going to have to think about between now and January is process in terms of an outright sale to a developer or potentially, if you prefer, a twenty-year ground lease. Those are some of the options that you think about. And also the selection committee in terms of putting a committee together that will review the responses that are turned in from developers. And I'll come back with, you know, after some more deliberations with Mr. Sacco and the commission, I think we'll have some recommendations in terms of, you know, numbers of what that should look like. So they're anxious to keep moving this along, and we'll continue to meet and deliberate in terms of the information and criteria going forward.
Thank you. Item C, Board of Ed, Town Council Communications Subcommittee, that was postponed.
The next meeting for that will be on December 8th.
And Item D, Police Commission.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to begin my reporting on the last Police Commission meeting in terms of some major issues, in terms of safety, and also the fact that in talking with, in the Police Commission and looking at a five-year plan and what things that we need, that our police department is woefully inadequate in terms of the technology and equipment available that's available in area towns. We spent a lot of time talking about the two incidents that happened about a week ago, and I'm sure most of you read about it in the newspaper. The first one happened at 1:00 AM in the morning. It's on Seahill Road where you had two men who were stealing items from cars. When the police arrived and confronted those men, one of them sped his car towards a police officer. The police officer had to jump out of the way. He was slightly clipped, I think. The vehicle, one of the police cruisers, was damaged. It was through the help of the North Haven Police Department that they were able to catch this, the first assailant. And then 2:00 o'clock that afternoon on Sunday, there were two more suspects that were confronted by police who were stealing items from, from a business on Route 80. In talking, you know, length with the commission, we talked about the fact that one of the things that we could start looking at some serious needs for the police department, and that would be cameras and body cameras. It would be nice to have cameras for cars, but if you had to make a choice in talking with commissioners, body cameras might be an important piece. Right now, there's no way to videotape what happens when policemen are confronted. And also, in doing research and talking with the lieutenant today, and he provided me some information, I'm not going to even try to give you numbers tonight because I think you'd probably jump under chairs, but by having cameras, body cameras, it would help a lot. It would even, in doing research, it reduces crime. It also provides the perspective of what happened. It provides more transparency, and it also would protect our police officers. So what I would like to ask is if the next council meeting, and I've talked to the vice chair of the Police Commission, if we could have the police chief, the vice chair, and perhaps lieutenant come and talk about, they're obviously much more knowledgeable. I am, they've given me information, but to have a discussion about the need for some cameras, particularly body cameras, I think that it's time that we start moving more to the 21st century and help our police officers. Because I think, you know, we all say safety of citizens is important, but also the safety of our police officers is also important. And in having that discussion at that meeting, I was really concerned, and I spent some time in research, and I think that, and I have to commend the police for helping me with that too, but I would like to ask that we do that.
Thank you, Lori. I'm going to ask if we can move Item 5 up on the agenda, the community events and presentations before the Town Managers' Report. Do we need to formally amend the agenda, John? I don't think so. First, I'd like to welcome our guests from East Haven this evening. I believe the chief is here. Chief Blair, be welcome, and thank you for coming, and the other officers from East Haven as well. In September, Officer Robert Deco and Officer Robert Brockett, who I believe are here this evening if you want to come forward, were dispatched to a medical emergency. A male was unresponsive due to a heart condition, and upon arrival, they saw a group gathered around a man doing CPR. These two officers immediately assessed the patient and began administering CPR, rescue breathing, and defibrillation. Also arriving on scene were North Bramford firefighter Ken Ash, medic Rich Lennon, who also assisted with the CPR in stabilizing the patient to be transported to the hospital. Tonight, I would like to present proclamations from the State of Connecticut recognizing Officer Robert Deco and Officer Robert Brockett for their heroism in saving a man's life. And this is from the State of Connecticut, the General Assembly. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Officer Robert Deco, Officer Robert Brockett, in recognition of your bravery and heroism displayed in resuscitating a fellow citizen. We honor you in your efforts and commend you on your continued support for the community. You are a model officer and an inspiration to all of us. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success, given this day, November 18th. All right. We're going to go back to, and I would like to thank all the first responders for all that you do. Back to Item 4, the Town Managers' Report. Item A, CMed Update.
Yes, we had a meeting last week to discuss the future of CMed as we've been, it's been an ongoing saga throughout the summer, and it's going to be coming to a head in December. As I reported at the last, or maybe previous meetings, that the organization is looking for a December 31st notice in terms of towns' decisions to either stay or go. Again, this is something that was precipitated by New Haven's request and a few other big cities to pull out. That doesn't appear to be happening, that they haven't exercised that option to leave and are indicating at the last meeting that they're going to stay, given that there were some reorganizations within CMed to reduce the budget by thirty percent, which is currently in place. So there is still a viable opportunity at present, depending in whether or not we can continue to hold the towns that are in there. Our direction was looking if they were to pull out in West Haven and Hamden and all the big towns, there'd be nothing left to sustain it with the small towns, and we were looking and made the decision to pull out as well, but there was no viable option for us. It was only to piggyback on New Haven, which never, never came through, which never transpired. One of the other avenues they were looking at, as I mentioned, was teaming with, bringing in a partner with Yale. That has reached a dead end. They have, Yale has responded and said no, that they're not going to be a player. So that is unfortunate, would have helped the organization immensely. But there are other smaller things. The CMed group made a motion to empower the chairman to look at other options, such as potential consolidation with other CMeds with, or other organizations within the state, to see if that's a viable option. So they're exploring that. Bethany is going to be paying more revenue into the system because they have a, what's called a PSAP, and that is a added service above the core service. So that's additional revenue, as small as it may be. They are also looking at readjusting the numbers, knowing that through this process, Meriden has decided to pull out. But other than that, and the larger ones indicated around the table, that they are going to stay in at this point. So it's, the next meeting is, is December 11th for CMed. Obviously, the town council will meet again on the 9th, hoping to talk with Chief Seward again to strategize and make sure that we're exploring any options I may not be aware of within the, in the service, in the field. So it's still a work in progress. I think what we're going to have to wrestle with now is, and I have to defer to John, but some type of action to, to send notice whether or not we believe that there is viability with CMed and we're going to stay and ride it out, because I don't see any alternative at this point, and neither does Chief Seward. I did speak with him at length today, and we were putting our heads together trying to figure out, well, you know, we sent out an RFP, nobody responded. New Haven's not going out with, with their RFP. They're not executing it, so we can't ride their coattails. So there really isn't a viable option that we see at this point. We haven't given up. So we're going to continue to explore that, come back on the 9th, give you our best recommendation in terms of where we think CMed is going, and be ready for the December 31st decision date.
Because we're roughly budgeted at like 27,500, I think.
Yeah, I think, well, maybe closer to 24, I think. Yeah.
And we've got four from the state.
Yeah, and so we're seeing the reductions, just, it's whether or not there'll be any additional hits if other towns go, what those numbers look like. So it's unfortunately a very stressful situation trying to figure out which towns are going to commit and if any others are going to leave.
Where are these other towns going that are pulling out?
Well, they're, they're, they're going with other, other CMed organizations and other, I forget the names, but.
Shore.
Shoreline, yeah.
They're the ones that don't provide the full service or whatever?
Right, depending on what they need. If they just need the core services and they're big enough and they have their own PSAP, then they just, you know, they're contracting, and some of them are realizing savings. That's why they're, they're going.
Well, the biggest thing is whether this company's going to be around or whether it's going to cost us a fortune.
Right, well, it is, I mean, it's, it's the towns that make the organization, so it's, right.
So we can't predict who's dropping out, who's staying in. There's not much for us to do right now, I wouldn't think.
No, not at the moment. So it's, again, it's, it's, it still continues to plod along, hoping that informally we'll have a straw vote and be able to know who's in and who's out and whether we can afford, or how much it'll cost us.
Have they made any decisions with the capital, that 500,000?
No, they just don't want to even touch that. They just put that on the back burner to figure out, you know, what the organization's going to look like. They will have to address that. I think they're waiting to see who commits, what towns commit, and then what their needs are, but they, they'll have to address the technology, for sure. But right now, they're not going to touch that. So I'll bring this, expect to see this back on the agenda for the 9th.
Be good, Mike.
Yeah, that's it for CMed, unless there are any, any questions.
All right, Item 6, Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence. Designations and Appointments. Item A, Motion for Diane Bunback to the.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Diane Bunback to the Board of Education.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Counsel Diamond, seconded by Counsel Fornin. Roll call.
Mayor Candela?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel PC?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add Item 7B, Mary Bigelow, appointment of Mary Bigelow to the Greater New Haven Transit with a term to expire 12/31/16.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Angelo, seconded by Counsel Fornin. Roll call.
Mayor Candela?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel PC?
Yes.
Right now, I'd like to make a motion to add Item B, Mary Bigelow, appointment of Mary Bigelow to the Greater New Haven Transit.
Moved by Counsel Angelo, seconded by Deputy Mayor Whitworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candela?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel PC?
Yes.
And now I'd like to move the motion to appoint Mary Bigelow to the Greater New Haven Transit with a term to expire 12/31/16.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Angelo, seconded by Counsel Fornin. Roll call.
Mayor Candela?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel PC?
Yes.
Item B, Unfinished Business Discussion and Action. Updates to Define Benefit Plan Documents, this is still tabled. Item B, Review of Applications for Construction Project at 50 Fowler Road.
Yeah, I think this came up at the last meeting, and there's a memo that Carrie had prepared, giving the background information on that.
What was that, what I was asking about or something?
I think so, yeah.
He wanted to know how long it was going to last, so.
Yeah, I remember.
It goes to 2015.
Yeah, and I just want to point out, there was a typo. You see the memo that the steps.
I brought it up.
Step one is removing 60,000 square, 60,000 yards. Step two is 200,000 cubic yards. And that, if you look at the, based on the date of the first blasting permit issued, August 16, 2013, with a two-year timeframe, that would bring it to August of 2015 to complete that.
And that's just that step up there, right?
Step two, right. Kurt and Carrie are continuing to work with them almost on a weekly basis to review. So I don't know if there are any, any questions. It certainly conveyed them.
I'll be not here. If he has any questions, he can, let us call you.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Item C, Contract with Hibbert and Rosa Architects for Roof Replacement at Totucket Valley Elementary School.
I would like to make a motion to accept the contract from Hibbert and Rosa Architects for the Totucket Valley Elementary School. Total cost outlined for his professional services is $37,000. I'll second that.
John, were you able to, John, did you have, did you review this contract?
To be honest with you, no. This is sort of a telegraphic style. It's not really in the form of a contract, but it's more of a, it looks like a proposal, but it's certainly not in the form of a contract. I'll be happy to look at it. If you want to vote for it, it's subject to the approval of Town Attorney's Office. I mean, there's no signatory page for the town manager, for instance, assigned. I think they just want to bring this to your attention and properly draft a more formal document at some point.
Okay, I'll amend the motion that it is subject to Town Attorney's approval.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counsel Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candela?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counsel Angelo?
Yes.
Counsel Caprio?
Yes.
Counsel Diamond?
Yes.
Counsel Fawnin?
Yes.
Counsel PC?
Yes.
Item 9, New Business Discussion and Action. Resolution, Homeland Security, MOA.
Yeah, this is the annual resolution we do for the Homeland Security, which is the memorandum of understanding of the grant funds that we get from Homeland Security and Emergency Management. The same one last year, I think a little bit earlier. This year, it's falling a little bit later. But this is the standard resolution there for your approval. It allows me to execute the documents and send, transmit them to the, to the state.
I'd like to make a motion to be further resolved that Michael T. Paulus, as Town Manager of North Bramford, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the North Bramford Town Council and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents. including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
I'll second, but I think the first paragraph is an integral part of that, which actually authorizes the town to enter into agreements and Michael to act as its representative in doing so. So we need both of them.
Okay, the first paragraph is, be it resolved that the North Bramford Town Council may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate.
I'll reiterate my second.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fornin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor PC?
Yes.
Item B, approve of local match for the Board of Education's school security grant.
Good evening, you see, the Board of Ed applied for and successfully received grant dollars to enact some security enhancements at all five schools. The second page enlists the total projects, $169,000 is the total budget, of which $90,000 is coming from the state and $78,000 was coming from local funds. The Board of Ed through their prior budgets has actually taken $57,000 of their piece already out of their local operating funds. So another $20,000 is needed of the local side to complete our match. And this motion basically just accepts the grant and goes from there, then you'll see it tied into the CIP revision down the road, next item, I believe, on the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Bramford Town Council acknowledges the Board of Education's successful receipt of the 2014 School Security Competitive Grant Program funds in the amount of $90,739.41. Furthermore, in order to fund the balance of the local match required by this grant, the Town Council instructs the Treasurer-Finance Director to include $20,740.58 in the 2014-15 Capital Improvements Plan.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fornin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
The CIP or Capital Improvement Five-Year Plan, fiscal year 2014, '15 through fiscal year 2018, '19 Capital Improvement Plan.
Before you is probably one of the most comprehensive five-year plans that the town has done in the last five to six years. It seems we've gotten off the track of doing some long-term planning and focusing on the future, we kind of focus more on the day. So what I put back to the departments was to come in with a nice list of projects, and you could see that we had a substantial list going out to the poll '18, '19, and so on. And again, the funding on those outlying years isn't as important as the fact that we have now identified some projects that will need to be addressed as those years come forward and give us time to get back to the building facility study and all those things kind of tie in together. I would like to pay, turn your focus to the current year, and you'll notice the four, there are four highlighted lines that go horizontally. Those are the four changes to this document as it appeared in your adopted budget. You notice on the police vehicle line, there was originally 35,000, that got bumped to 42,300 at a prior Town Council meeting. The fire reserve, again, was 250, got bumped to 300,000, again, at a prior Town Council meeting. The Memorial Field, Memorial Park Tennis and Basketball, that was subject of a STEEP grant that we put in, and you see it in the STEEP grant column, so obviously if that doesn't materialize, the project won't get completed. And on the very bottom of the page is the item we just talked about, the security upgrades, $170,000 roughly total, of which 79 is other funds, and note on the bottom says that includes $57,000 of previously expended funds. I had to show the entire amount, the whole $170,000 expenditure, of which 79 is local and 91 is the school security money. So the way this process will play out is that the first step of this is to send it to P&amp;Z for an 824 referral, they will then act on it and send it back to this body for ultimately approval.
So Anthony, I have some questions.
Yes.
So this is a five-year plan.
Yes.
But things can be changed from, we're not tied into anything, I mean, because the, one of the problems I see is because we haven't done the facility study, the townwide facility study, none of those items are in here at all.
Did we even start that yet?
Yeah, we should have that finished up in terms of language by next week, and I'm glad you brought that up. My understanding, we're going to do both, looking at facility needs and space, right? Conditions, we're talking conditions and space.
Right.
Well, last night at Park and Rec Commission, they were talking about their five-year capital plan, which, you know, I know Pam submitted one and the things are in here, but the Park and Rec Commission did not have a chance to look at that at all. So they may, they were just concerned that they would have the opportunity
Oh, certainly.
if to change the order or the years in which some of the things that she had put on the list, because they had not had an opportunity to look at that. And then the other thing we talked about was, they are looking at a master plan for field usage, because that has been an ongoing problem for the last number of years. And I just think it's a good idea, if we're doing a facility dis, study, to also wrap that in, because some of the areas where they may think of putting fields or wanting to expand might be an area that we're looking at for expansion for town buildings or town services. So I think the two go hand in hand and should be done at the same time.
Definitely.
So that we have the total picture of what's going on.
Especially as you mentioned, looking towards the center of town with the SWH piece, if you don't want to put a field where you're going to move Town Hall or some other thing, you're 100% right, they should all be married together.
Right, so, so the RFP.
We maintain one, we heat one, everybody's.
So if the RFP.
Include the field, field use.
Yes, include field usage on that so that we can get the total picture on that. Okay, I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Bramford Town Council instructs the Treasurer-Finance Director to forward the Capital Improvement Plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-24, and bring it back to this body upon receipt of their action.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Whitworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor PC?
Yes.
Item D, review of the town's self-insurance option. I know Counselor Rose had a quote last minute, he had a work late and he apologized, but he really wants to keep this moving forward, that was one of the.
Yeah, and there's not much to report, other than it is Dave Matthews, we'll be, we'll bring, put him on the agenda, bring him here when we have those numbers. I don't think, I don't know if we'll have them by December 9th meeting, but we may. And certainly, you know, he knows that we're pushing hard and we need to have this done, so he's on it. And then, and I know Al's concern was in terms of having it in the, in time for the budget season to be able to, you know, to look at these numbers. And Dave has assured us that that will happen, we'll have that in time, and I'm sure Anthony can confirm that we'll have those numbers in time.
Anthony, are we looking at other towns as well, kind of comparing?
As far as rates of increase, or as far as?
Oh, self-insurance, you know, some of the other towns, similar to?
To get their experience, you mean, or?
Yeah.
Um, well, I was in a conversation a couple weeks ago with a town that went down the self-insurance road, and it was one of those, all that glitters is not gold scenarios. A town similar to our size going towards, towards Fairfield County way. So again, the numbers that you're going to see may not be, you know, the tremendous kind of savings that people are anticipating, there's other side issues that go along with it. So what Dave is going to do, he's assured us, is that when the time comes for a renewal from Anthem, he will get a fully insured quote and then a self-insured quote, and then we'll weigh all the factors of the self-insurance and make an educated decision at that time. Probably towards, closer to January, quite honestly, it's not going to happen, I don't believe in time for December meeting. Typically, January, the process starts where Anthem gives you its first pass of the renewal and then it gets negotiated further down. The more experience you go out, hopefully better experience, the rate increase typically comes down.
All right, thank you.
Financial report. Financial report remains unremarkable. The tax collections right on target with last year. I'll bring your attention to the second line where you see the delinquent collections, $116,000 this year compared to about $10,000 last year. So some significant strides in delinquent collections. Overall revenue, pretty close to the same as last year this time, expenditure is the same as well. One item I'd just like to bring up, I was at a Government Finance Officers Association quarterly meeting today, and one of the sessions was run by the folks from CCM. And the word is, as the state's financial condition continues to erode, we might see something that we saw back when John Rowland was governor, a mid-year budget cut. They're not sure where it's going to come from yet, it might be ECS, that's usually the last one we get towards May. But there, again, as the financial condition of the state continues to erode, the governor, I believe, is meeting in December with a preliminary game plan, how he plans on addressing this. So don't be surprised if you get a little bit of a haircut this year in your state money. The amount, we're not sure yet, which grant, we're not sure yet, but we did go through this again, I don't have to get the exact year, it might have been late 90s when John Rowland was governor, and it kind of puts all the balls up in the air, because what are you forced to do at that time? But then to do some kind of spending freeze to make up the difference, and we hope we don't come down that road again. But again, as we see in the paper every day, the state's condition is pretty dismal and getting worse. As this year is not bad enough, next year is even reported to be over $1 billion projected deficit. So how that's going to impact our state funding next year, it could be pretty significantly, I'm not sure. But that was the word today, that be prepared that you might get a reduction in your promised state money this year. So stay tuned as they say.
Thank you, Ann. Item F, tax refunds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fornin, seconded by Counselor PC. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor PC?
Yes.
Item G, approval of town council meeting date for 2015.
We should take out election night.
Well, I don't think we generally met on election.
No, we never met on election night.
It was, wasn't it the following Tuesday?
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
It was the 10th.
And did we only meet once in November then, on election, right?
Yeah, I think it was once.
We only met the second.
Move that to the 10th and take out the 17th.
Correct. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2015 meeting schedule with the change being that we will meet just once in November and be November 10th.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor PC. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor PC?
Yes.
Item H, approval of Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee date for 2015.
Mike, do we have to approve it tonight? Because I really think this needs to be a discussion between the two at our next meeting.
Yeah, the night, we can do it at the night.
Okay, only because right now, the way it's set up, and it has been in the past, is it's every month, but based on the number of meetings that have been canceled during this school year or during this fiscal year, I think it would just be, we should have a discussion that we might want to reduce this down and maybe meet five or six times during the year and kind of pick dates around budget time and, you know, not meet in the summer. But I think it's a discussion that needs to be had at our next meeting. So I'd like to table this.
Okay.
I make a motion to, I make a motion to table.
Item H.
Item H.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Whitworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor PC?
Yes.
Item I, the appointment.
Yeah, could we, yeah, I think we hold off on that one and then come back to it.
Right. Okay, item 10, citizen statements and petitions.
Yeah, Chris Kranick, 49 Cortland Drive. Two town meetings ago, it was extended by the council to speak with some people from the citizens who were concerned about the propane tanks. My attorney told me that you were no longer interested in speaking. Is that correct, and, you know, if so, why not?
I'm not aware of that invitation, but we've had, we've had several meetings with members of the community who have expressed their views and asked questions of the council, and the council responded. I don't know how, I'm not aware of this overture that you're referring to.
Well, Al Rose was speaking about, let's perhaps put a moratorium on the unlimited amount of propane on the adjacent sites, maybe we could work together on the areas that we could come together, referring to that also.
Well, the moratorium is a planning and zoning matter, number one, and number two, any moratorium would not affect any pending application, which I think is your focus.
No, since you brought it up at the town council meeting, I assume that you had some jurisdiction over it. If you were speaking on behalf of the P&amp;Z, you know, I'd appreciate knowing that so I could speak to them perhaps, but I am also concerned about the unlimited on the adjacent lots, and I would like to know the feeling of the town council, if they share that concern as well.
Well, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission, actually at the last meeting, it was your attorney who agreed that, on the question of moratorium, that it was something that would be handled by planning and zoning. Specifically, Councilman Rose raised that as something that the town council might get involved with, and I think I commented on something in effect that the last moratorium may have had to do with cluster housing or affordable housing, cluster housing, and that that was a planning and zoning matter. And your attorney, if I recall correctly, agreed that that would, that this is a planning and zoning matter, any type of moratorium on anything that they regulate. And obviously, they have regulatory powers with respect to propane tanks and any other matters that come under the regulations.
So it's the town council's feeling that they're going to leave it up to the P&amp;Z to take initiative, to close the loophole on the unlimited propane on those lots?
Well, you're going back to a previous meeting now where I was asked to render an opinion as to the role of the town council. When you speak, it's the town council's opinion, the town council, of course, only acts in the aggregate, there's no individual consciousness of a town council, it only votes on matters that are appropriate to it. The, the opinion that I rendered was that the interests that you're serving are exclusively to be handled by decisions made by the Planning and Zoning Commission and in the Wetlands Commission, and that the town council does not have the authority to substitute its judgment for members of that body or to attempt to influence the judgment of any members of those bodies. And whether that's a good thing or not, that's, that's the law of the State of Connecticut, not, not locally, just the town of locally, just the town of North Branford.
So, how we personally stand on that?
I would like in a minute, but I just wanna make one observation, that the mayor appeared before the P&amp;Z, strongly recommending this proposal. That seems to be contrary to what you just said. Could the mayor not also go before the P&amp;Z and recommend a similar saying that these unlimited amounts of propane is something I'd like you to seriously consider?
Well, actually, I don't believe it's conflictual, what I just said. I had said that the town council, of which the mayor is a member, only acts in the aggregate, only acts as a body when it takes a vote. It cannot act, in fact, at any other time.
He can make proposals, as he did with that case.
Well, I'll get to that. The town council can only act at meetings. It can't act outside of meetings, and it can't act as an individual, or by individuals, unless the council as a body authorizes a certain individual, such as the town manager, or some other subcommittee of the town council to take some action. I'm aware that the mayor appeared at a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and advocated or voiced his opinion as a citizen, or if you will, as the mayor. But as the mayor, he has no independent authority. He has no independent authority, has no more power than an individual councilperson. He basically runs the meeting, because we need to have somebody run a meeting. But he is a councilperson like the rest of the people sitting at this díaz.
So, if he can appear before the P&amp;Z and say that I seek these guys out, I think they would make a great addition to our town, could he not go before the P&amp;Z and say, I'm concerned about unlimited propane, and I would ask you to consider regulations to close it, or put a ceiling on it?
The question you ask is, does the mayor have the right to express his opinion like any other citizen in the town of North Branford? And the answer is yes.
I can appear before P&amp;Z and express my, I can appear at a P&amp;Z meeting and express my opinion at a closed meeting?
It depends on what's on the agenda. If the agenda invites statements from the community, or if the agenda invites statements that are germane to the matters that are on the agenda to be discussed, the answer is yes. But you'll have to consult the particular agenda of that meeting.
If XYZ is on the agenda, does there has to be an invitation to the public to discuss XYZ, or can they just discuss XYZ?
The word invitation is my word. I'm referring to the actual agenda. If the, for instance, our agenda has a provision for citizen statements and petitions, I'm referring to that as an invitation. You don't need an invitation like you have to be invited to go to the commission, or to the board meeting. But, again, every board and every commission in town may have their own particular procedures that are suited to the business that it conducts. And sometimes the agendas provide for statements, sometimes they don't. So, I can't give you a general, I can't give you a general answer on that.
This is my understanding that the P&amp;Z hearings are closed to the public.
Some may be, I don't know. I don't know. Some meetings are public hearings, which are.
No, I'm not referring to that. This was not a public hearing. This was clearly on the agenda, and someone spoke about it. I'm just, you know, out of curiosity, I can show up at a P&amp;Z, and if it's on the agenda, I can stand up and speak about it.
Once again, you have to look at the agenda.
So, if I look at the May 15th, and I just see that it's on there, there has to be somewhere where it says, a citizen can speak?
I'll tell you what, why don't you give me a call, when you get a copy of the agenda, and I'll be happy to go over it with you? Because I'm uncomfortable, you know, addressing an agenda that I don't have in front of me, or specifically.
Okay, that's fine, I understand.
You can, I will invite you to call me at any time, to go over that agenda. There are certain administrative functions that Planning and Zoning does that are not even subject to public meetings. They're sort of perfunctory things, and that may be what you're referring to. The idea is that, look, every board and commission has a certain task to perform, they have business to perform, to the extent that the townspeople are, offered the opportunity to comment on that. And by the way, there's no constitutional right to comment, or to say anything at a board or commission meeting unless that board or commission meeting, as a rule, has an agenda which allows you to do so. You can go out.
How would the rule to allow that look like on the agenda?
Well, you know, again, if you show me the agenda, I'll interpret it for you, or I'll even consult with the planner. Clearly, you had no difficulty in interpreting on our agenda, citizen's statements and petitions. So, I would expect to see something like that. I'm not a frequent scrutinizer of the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda. But again, I don't want you to feel that I'm not, that I'm trying to avoid the question. I just would like to see what you're talking about, and I'll be happy to direct you in the proper pathway to go.
Sure, I appreciate that. But if Vincent wants the answer to the question, does how the town council feel about the unlimited propane, I would appreciate it.
Unlimited propane, I don't, I honestly, I don't think unlimited is a good thing. That's not a good thing. You know, I think what you're trying to get at with the meetings is, will the committee or whoever it is allow speaking at their meetings? I think that's what it is, isn't it, John? Whether they allow it or not?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
That's what it comes down to. The committee, whether they allow the speaking or not. I'm always in favor of letting the public speak, that's one of my biggest things. Because that's what we need to know, what our public is thinking and what they want. That's why we're here. So, I mean, I was out for a while with my knee, and got operated on, and all that good stuff, but, you know, I don't know what to tell you. I'm just a citizen like everybody else. And I own a business in town, obviously, and I went to school here, my kids went to school here, now my grandkids are going to school here. So, I'm concerned also about a bunch of things with our town too. And it doesn't just have to do with, you know, propane or anything, but there's some things that I've always wanted and dreamed to do with our town, and we'll see what happens. Who knows?
So, I'd be interested.
But I think if you go to a committee meeting, and you ask them to let you speak, and then maybe they'll give you five or 10 minutes to get your point across. I don't think they want, you know, you to speak for a half hour or anything. But I would write a letter to the committee and ask if you would be allowed to respectfully speak at a meeting.
Okay.
That's what I, the way I would go about it. And then if they say yes, they say yes. If they say no, they say no.
Okay, I appreciate that. I also would like to put out to the town council, if anyone is concerned about the unlimited, I'd be interested in working with them to go before the P&amp;Z.
I'm always at Supreme Seaford six days a week. Come on in, you'll have to talk to me while I'm working.
All right, that's fine, thank you, I appreciate it. I also wanted to get some clarity on, you spoke of there's 60 facilities like this in the state of Connecticut. Could you give me a parameter of how many gallons that you used in that?
I didn't, I mean, I made that statement, but others made it before me. I didn't, I have absolutely no, I believe Al Rose, that meeting, said the 60.
Are they 60, 1,000 gallons, or 60, 60,000 gallons?
Again, the statement was made by Al Rose. I don't know which statement you're referring to. I think maybe.
I'm referring to the statement that there are 60 facilities like this in the state of Connecticut.
Well, I don't know that I said that. I said there, I may have said in an interview, not at one of these meetings, in the answer to a question by one of the news channels, that I understood that there were 60 other propane facilities in the state of Connecticut. I would not have suggested that they're all the same amount of gallons, or if I knew that they were all the same amount of gallons. But the original statement that I heard was from Mr. Rose, I think he did some investigating on his own, to come up with that.
So, I could contact Mr. Rose and see what the parameters were? Because it seems to be a pertinent point to how many gallons those are.
I wouldn't see any reason why you couldn't try to contact him and ask him.
Okay, great, thank you. And I also had a question about a public hearing that I saw in the town manager's report. Seeking a town meeting with some experts, perhaps a state homeland security?
Oh, yeah. Well, that was, Counselor Rose had requested the item, and he's not here tonight, so in deference to him, I would hold off and bring that back if the council wants to do. I did some investigating in terms of, I think the council had talked about some type of public informational meeting, and I have some information on that I have not shared with the council yet, but if they want to, they can bring it back for December 9th, and we can explore that opportunity.
So, I guess my question would be, how much notice would you anticipate giving the public on a forum like this?
It's hard to say. The council has to have that threshold question first, if they wanna do it. There's a cost involved in doing that, and a scheduling issue to do that. So, you know, I'd give you as much notice, or the public as much notice as we possibly could.
Yeah, I would appreciate, you know, 30 days' notice, certainly at least, because we would have experts who we'd have to, you know, get in touch with, and they have schedules as well. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Doug Lee?
Doug Lee.
Doug Lee Harrison, North Street Lifetime Resident. Basically, what I wanted to speak on is what the town manager talked about, the Economic Development Committee, but I did wanna make a couple of comments on this propane deal. I am very disgusted with our town government. And my taxes are paying that man over there to represent us. He ain't, we gotta go out and use our own money to hire a lawyer to represent us. This is a crock, the whole thing, the whole bunch of you. That's it with propane right now, we'll see what happens tomorrow night. But on the Economic Development Committee, seems like we got a steamroller rolling across Wall Field. Now, there are a lot of people in this town that I know of, and I imagine there's more, that wanna preserve that piece of property as open space, a park, or don't sell it and develop it. You got all kinds of vacant stores, you got a mess up here in Central where they're dumping mattresses, and all kinds of crap up there. Develop it! But leave Wall Field, that's the last piece of open space we've got in North Branford, in the center of North Branford. In many of us, we've got generations of Little Leaguers that played on the field, and my generations that didn't even know Little League was invented, but we played on that field. And it seems like the idea of preserving the field has gotten steamrolled over with this Economic Development Committee Commission. Now, I don't know how much money you paid that yo-yo from Yale to design something. Well, we got stores vacant, we don't need them. Several years ago, Ralph Coulter, when this come vacant, it's been back and forth, back and forth, all of a sudden, this is mushroomed into developing Wall Field. Ralph Coulter did a design, like a park, like a green, with a monument. He was a World War II veteran, he was in the drum corps, won all kinds of awards back in the 30s, 40s, whatever it was. And he gave me a sketch he did, and it's filed, I had Carol Zep file it. The new girl didn't know about it, and I don't know if she's looked it up. It's just an idea of how that could be developed. The North Branford Green is nothing but a piece of nothing. They moved all the monuments, we can't even hold a Memorial Day celebration, or ceremony there now in front of the monument, as we have done for generations. And maybe putting this open space as a park, sidewalks or whatever, it would give us a place for celebrations like this, with a little more room. So, that's been filed, but it's gotten sidetracked with the loss of Carol that was into it at the time. So, I'm just bringing it to the council's attention, that this ought to be looked at and possibly preserved. Never mind, we got enough vacant stores laying around this town, till we get them filled, I can't see trying to build more just to sit vacant. The other thing is, as Rose brought up with the Recreation Commission, they're looking for more playing fields. Well, you aren't gonna have a Little League field on there, but it seems like you could have some tennis court, a tennis court, or a basketball court, or something that would alleviate the strain on the other athletic fields, especially if they're looking for it. The bottom line is, I hate to see it sold and developed. I'm a lifetime resident, that was my ball field when I was a kid, and it was a ball field for a lot of kids in this town. So, I'm asking, the other question I got directly to the council, do we get a referendum vote to allow the sale of the property? Does it come back to the citizens, or do you guys just sell it? Nobody gonna answer that?
I'd ask the attorney, because I don't know what the legal deal is on that.
We don't, whenever we go to sell a piece of property, that's a discussion that the council will have, it has to be referred to Planning and Zoning, and ultimately, it's a decision of the council. If somebody from the community objects to that, there is a process to follow in the charter. But typically, it does, typically, we don't go back to the community at large. We have, the only time we involve the, under our charter, the residents, is in the referendum on the voting. At, you know, when we vote for, when we have a question, or when we.
Like we did charter revision?
Yeah, charter revision, something like that. Whether or not we sell a piece of property, or purchase a piece of property, we have to refer to the boards and commissions in town that have expertise in that area. Ultimately, it's our decision. If the requisite number of members of the community object to it, there is a process that they can avail themselves of.
It's complicated.
Well.
And the other, excuse me, the other question, does the town own that property, or does the quarry own that property?
I don't know, the answer to that is, what property?
I've heard both ways, and I don't know. You know, I know the quarry put a lot of fill in there, that built the field, you know, over the years.
I'm not familiar with the property, I'm sorry.
Yeah. But, so the council could vote to sell the property, regardless of what the citizens want?
Well, the, not necessarily. The citizens have a right to file a petition, to.
Are you kidding? We filed a petition on these propane tanks, it's no good.
Yeah, that's not, the problem is.
You know, they set us up good.
That's a different, that's a different procedure. The procedure for the propane tanks has to go with Planning and Zoning. The town council doesn't get involved in that. We have an obligation to, as I said, to refer matters of sale, or lease, or purchase, to Planning and Zoning at some point, then they give us their recommendation, then we can act on it.
You know, we had 1,000 citizens sign a petition. It was a waste of paper, from what I gather now. I mean, where do the citizens of the town have a say? We put it into these people here, and it goes out the window.
Want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. The petition was not an effective way of challenging the decision of the Planning and Zoning. That's all I can tell you. There was a method, I think you know that now. But at the time, at the time, the usage of a petition was not the effective way to handle that. And there is a recourse. There was a recourse during the public meetings that Planning and Zoning held during that five-month period, and there was an appeal to court. Now, it's very good for me to say this in hindsight, I understand that. But you asked a question, I have to answer it honestly. The petition was not something that would have led to the result that I think you were looking for. But the result lay right with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ultimately appealing it if that was the desire.
Well, I guess I'm old fashioned. But, you know, a petition with that many citizens, and there's a lot more people that live in the town that weren't voters, that couldn't sign the petition, but they live here, that were with us. And it would seem like the people should have their say. And I don't know what kind of funagling these lawyers in Hartford and everything have done, but that goes with the propane, but it also goes with Wall Field. And I think, I was always, that's why I asked, because I was always of the understanding that when the town was gonna sell a piece of town-owned property, it had to be approved by the residents. Now, you're telling me, no?
That was an earlier form of government, perhaps. We don't have, the only time we have a town meeting is very limited circumstances, and that's with the election. We don't, some communities, some towns and cities in Connecticut, not cities, towns, have a town committee form of government, where the town committee, I don't mean the Republican or the Democrat, I mean, the people.
It's like Branford.
Have a, yeah, have a much greater say. That's not our form of government. Have a mu, yeah, have a much greater say. That's not our form of government. You know, so that, you may want to look into that.
We need something, because I feel, I got no say in what happens in this town, or in this country, really. It's-
Welcome to the club.
Run by the lawyers. That's it, you know. Zoning, when zoning, I'll tell you a little story, if I can have that much time. You know, the town way back in the late forties voted zoning in. They had the zoning thing. Somebody got ahold, and they called another town meeting, and they voted it out. And when they voted it out, we had several builders that had these one-acre lots. They got them filed, and that's why you've got a lot of development houses in here with one-acre lots. Finally, they accepted zoning, and we've had to live with the acre lots and so forth, the zoning. And zoning has always been trying to keep us up to date and keep us in line. This deal on the propane tanks is way out of line for zoning. But anyway, so I'm not going to get any help on Wall Field then, from the council?
No, we're listening to you. I mean, there's, we aren't taking any action right now on Wall Field. We're still gathering up the data.
His report, you know, the Economic Development, you've blown money into this guy from Yale to do all his design work and all this stuff. Sounds like you've got a steamroller going through Wall Field, and I think we're losing out on any chance of saving it. You know, we've got the fight with the propane tanks, and this is another fight that's going to come up, and I hope we can get some backing on it. But please, council, keep it in mind. It's the last piece of open space we got in the center of North Branford. You got the piece down on 139. That's a soccer field. You've got a playground, parking.
Actually, the center of North Branford's right near the police station, around there. That's the real center of North Branford, between Northford and North Branford.
Well, that's where it's headed, okay? But for our borough, however you want to put it, whatever it's going to be in the future, we should have a piece of open space. It's accessible to the trolley line for bicycling or hikers if people want to come. There's Development City Mission. You've got all kinds of development that way. It would be accessible. We don't have to go on this rat race of Route 80 that we inherited. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug Lee.
Mayor, one quick thing. The Rotary is having their annual Santa Claus tree lighting this year. Santa's landing in Northford at Company Two Firehouse on Friday, December 5th, at six o'clock. And then the next morning, I believe Santa will be at Smith Library, 12:06 at 9:00 a.m. So Friday, December 5th, at six at Company Two, and Saturday, December 6th, 9:00 a.m. at Smith Library.
Thank you.
Someday, we're going to have a one place for everybody.
If Santa gets confused.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to mention two very worthwhile projects that are going on in North Branford right now in regards to the holidays. One, the first thing is Night to Care, which has been a program that the schools have handled for at least the last fifteen years.
There we are.
And what it is, is they provide gifts and food baskets to the needy families in town. And when the program started out, they were servicing roughly twenty families. It has now grown to ninety families and one hundred and forty-six children. Their donations this year, they did a huge food drive on Sunday at Stop and Shop. Their food donations are down for this year. Some of the items that they're looking for, that can be dropped off at Jerome Harrison School up until December 5th, are applesauce, syrup, pasta sauce, cereal and pancake mix. If anyone would like to make donations, you can bring it to the school. They still have snowmen available, which denotes a child, the age of the child, to buy gifts for that can be dropped off at the school, which then the school community has an event where they wrap the gifts and they get them ready to give to the family. Everything is very confidential. The information comes from the district, the school district in regards to these families, and then they arrange a pickup time for the families. The other event is, at the senior center, there is a tree in the lobby of the community center with snowflakes, and this is for the senior citizen, and it's based the same premise, that you can pick up a snowflake. It has an item on there to purchase for a senior in town. You would bring it back to the community center for the senior center, and they will get it to the resident. So these are two very worthwhile programs. If any of the residents are interested in helping out, we would be very happy to have you do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is George Miller. I'm Dogwood Road. Town attorney said that the appearance of the mayor before Planning and Zoning is his right as a citizen, not coming in as the mayor, and that's a scandalous misstatement. When you go back over the testimony of Mr. Candelora at that Planning and Zoning meeting, one of the Planning and Zoning people said, "Oh, I'm very glad to have heard that positive testimony. It makes me feel better." Mr. Candelora does not come in as a private citizen in any testimony here, as far as I'm concerned. He is on the town council. He is the mayor, and his, what he has to say certainly is far more weighty than any, anyone who comes up to this microphone. I resent the suggestion that he comes in on an equal basis.
Yeah, Chris Crank, 49 Courtland Drive. I think what's happening in town is the citizens are becoming a lot more interested in what's happening in town, and certainly, Wall Field is also coming up. I would like to know, are we going to be able to take a look at the appraisal of the property, the lease terms, if we do a land lease, the details, will those be available to the public? And secondly, we're reaching out to the town council and to the attorney as to a process for us to become more involved. Perhaps at our next conversation on the phone, or whether it's in person, you could instruct the public as to what the referendum would look like regarding this topic of Wall Field?
Well, it would be an initiative, and you'd basically be proposing an ordinance for the town council to adopt, that in some way would affect the sale of, or the power to sell Wall Field, or to include more input from people in terms of the sale of a piece of property like an athletic field. If the council rejects it, then it goes to a referendum. But that's all in the present charter. That's a, the reason why, the reason why that would be appropriate here is because this is something that the town council does and is responsible for doing. So if you wanted to exercise the right of the initiative on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the town council, you could do that. The difference in the propane situation was a petition-
No, I clearly understand that they're A and B.
Yeah.
But I would just appreciate any details in helping explaining the charter. I know the charter is up there, but for the average layperson, it's not always information that they're easily around all day, and when they're, so, you know, just, you know, respectfully request maybe some interpretation and some guidance so that the town can be participating in a, in a larger sense?
I would, I would love to see more people come to our meetings. For six, seven years, I've sat here and seen maybe two or three people in the audience, and it would be the best thing in the world for more people just to show up. I know it's boring. I know it's a pain in the neck, but this is your town, your kids' education. I know everybody's busy, but I would think the more people got involved in everything that we do, the better off we're all going to be.
Well, it's certainly our intention.
Thank you.
By the way, before, and I'm happy to go over with yourself or anybody in, anyone else in your group, or a friend of yours, or whomever, anything about the charter, you know, whether it's on what we're talking about now or anything else. That's not, and if the council asks me for legal opinion, interpreting, initiative, I would do that, although it's kind of useless in a vacuum. But I don't want to de-emphasize the most efficient way of getting possibly the results you're looking for, and that is what you're doing right now. The council has to make a decision, and it certainly is going to listen to folks from the community, opinions that the folks have from the community on matters that are particularly within the jurisdiction of the town council. Initiative is sort of the last result. You try to exercise your input with the town council. You didn't get the results you wanted. There's that possibility for initiative would then exist. But clearly, the town council on the vast number of matters that come before, seek out input from the public. Sometimes we have public hearings on matters of that nature. So, you know, including any change in the charter, that by our own charter has to have public hearings. So sometimes you have to be a little more assertive, but many times, the council is more than willing to hear from the public on a particular matter.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. And I know on this Wall Field matter, that I myself, as well as many other people, are quite interested in the topic in general, but also the specifics. If it were to be a land lease, how much? If we put it out to a developer, how bound can we make him to do a certain design? How much discretion does he have? You know, the devil's in the detail, so to speak. So we're certainly interested in all that information. So I'm at a loss as to how it's presented to me. Like, for example, I'd be interested in the appraisal from Berkshire.
That should be public knowledge.
That is.
Yeah.
The only thing that's not going to be public is the negotiation over the lease. In other words, under the Freedom of Information Act, if the town has made a decision to lease something, or to be a lessor, the deliberations and the terms of that lease would not be something that would be in the formative stage exposed to public scrutiny. Once a lease is drafted, that's a public document. But, you know, the idea of whether the property should be sold, or whether it should be leased, or whether nothing should be done with it, or how it might be used, that's all open and public and can be discussed at any council meeting that you choose to have it discussed. You know, again, with some constraints in terms of time and being repetitious, or argumentative, or whatever. But for the most part, those topics are quite relevant for this board to listen to.
Could perhaps the board put together some type of tentative schedule as to the calendar, as to where, how quickly they want to act, and some kind of timeline whereby, you know, in April or May, we have to decide whether it's going to be a field, or whether it's going to be developed, you know, whether it's going to be sold or leased?
One of the things that I think I have to look at when we're talking about something like that is the whole town. You know what I'm saying? Sometimes you have to give something up that's a five-acre piece for something that's going to be centralized and going to be much bigger, and it's actually, we might even be able to have a town picnic at a place like this. There's things that can be brought in there that are harmless, that bring in great tax dollars, and it could also help us build the fields that we need. Like I said, we have 200 acres on Route 22 that the town owns. It's sitting there, okay? If we don't utilize it, we're foolish. We can make a town amphitheater. We could do a million things. A town campus, put all our services in one centralized spot. We might have to give up a piece of land to somebody to come in there and do something with it that's going to generate, I don't know how much tax dollars, 30,000, 50,000, whatever they do there. I'm not sure. But we need to look at everything in the big-picture sense, instead of looking at one little thing here and one little thing there, something like the Wall Field area.
No, I completely see where you're going, and I'm on board 100%. I think we have to, if we're going to give up that, maybe that isn't the place for the public space. Like you say, there may be, but I think the public needs a plan laid out before them.
That's what I'm trying to work on.
Just exactly what you're saying. If we give a little here, what do we get here? Because we do have to make decisions.
Absolutely. We need to look at everything, and we need to look out 10 to 15 years in the future.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Art Kaplan, Dogwood Road. First of all, I'd like to just thank everybody on the council and Mr. Jismandi. I think this is a stepping stone that it shows we're trying to work together. A concern that I have is, it's minor, but I think it's important. It's been bothering me for a while. You know, a town beautification program. I go through Branford, you know, throughout the year. There's seasonal decorations. There's beautiful plants hanging from the lamp posts. There's Halloween decorations on the green. You go through Guilford, you see the same. You go to Madison, you see the same. And, you know, with the construction, with the, with the construction of Route 80, like the gentleman said, it took away the, a little bit of the green that I think memorialized people who served in the service, and it's taken away from us. And now we're looking at the Wall Field, and what are we going to do? We're going to give that over to some developer and make it into something that's probably going to fail. But I'd like to question, you know, or ask, because I think a lot of the citizens are asking for the town council and the Planning and Zoning for opportunities to work together. What can the towns offer to enhance the beautification of the town? There's nothing, I'm up here 43 years, and I live up behind Cumberland Farms within that blast zone, and I'm very much concerned about that, but that's another story. But if you go down Route 80, you see gas stations and you see mechanics. You don't see anything that's appealing to anybody. And, you know, I wrote a three-page narrative that I was going to read tonight, but I don't want to take up too much time. But, you know, we don't have anything that's going, that's enhancing the town to bring people in.
Exactly.
You go up Seahill Road, you have a house, there's houses up there with grass that's three feet tall, with electrical cords coming out the windows. You have houses up there that's wrapped in Ty-Vac for three and four years. I lived there. I literally spent thousands of dollars a year at Van Wildens and Rivezi's when they were there, you know, enhancing my property. But what can the town do? Who do we talk to, or who in the town, on any of the committees, can assist or put something together that's going to enhance, you know, the town?
We actually need a place to be able to do that, honestly. I mean, Central Plaza is, honestly, it needs to be like leveled and redone, to be honest with you. And the little mom and pop stores can't survive anymore. That's why we have so many empty, small storefronts. You cannot generate enough cash flow to stay in business. So we need to look at a different perspective of how to bring businesses into our town on a little bit more of a larger scale that we can live with. That's the whole thing.
And I understand that. And I think, you know, for the most part, during the summer of 4th to July, we have flags hanging all over-
Absolutely.
Route 80. That's a wonderful thing. I'm a veteran myself. But what, there's got to be something else we can do. There's absolutely nothing. You've got the big, we call this the Verazano Bridge over here.
Yeah.
Tocca. You've got those beautiful streetlights up on top. Why doesn't somebody call them and say, "Why don't you light those up?"
Right.
It's an enhancement to maybe-
They want to do a UI.
-and coming into our area. UI, they can afford it, you know? So that was just my question. You know, is there, do we have blight laws that we can enforce? Maybe it's to, you know, obviously to improve the general environment of our neighborhoods, but it could also create some revenue, because if somebody's not going to uphold their properties, maybe we should put a little ticket on their door and say, you know, and if you don't-
We talked about blight laws actually a few years ago. It's hard to do, because those people most likely are in very financial, bad financial straits anyway, and it's a hard thing to go over there and put a fine on them on top of everything else that they have over their head. That's where you think about like that. But I mean, if it gets really, really out of hand, something does have to be-
Well, I agree. It's a tough economic situation, but wherever you look in our town, you go down 22, the lower end by the church, just over the bridge, there's a house there with four vans, and if you look in between them, there must be 40 toilets. Forty toilets. A slight exaggeration, maybe 20. Twenty toilets. And wherever you go down, on Route 80, on Seahill Road, there are televisions that are left on the side of the road for weeks. The base of Seahill Road was littered, and I got a Frank, Frank, what's his name? Frank-
Manow.
What is it?
Manow.
Public Works.
Fran.
Fran.
He's a wonderful guy.
Yes.
For years, I've always had, I've never had problems with plowing and so on, but I called him a couple of times. I don't know if it's state property or our property, the town's property, but I call and it's taken care of. But to, you know, we need to eliminate some of these bulky televisions that are there, you know, for weeks on end, and toilets on the sides of the road. I mean, who the hell wants to move into a community, you know, and see this? So I just want- So I just want to thank everybody for listening, and I think it's a great step that, you know, it appears as though, you know, the townspeople, you know, are trying to work together with the council and Planning and Zoning, and we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, may I just want to, this is the information pertinent to Council Rose's request on that information, so I'm just going to hand that around, and... I think just, you know, out of respect for Al, we'll hold that for the next meeting. Be happy to bring that back.
You already spoke three times. What's...
Bill.
I'm going to tie me this.
You can tie me, I'm trying to make sure, I wasn't going to say anything, but you're talking about the town charter. Now, I took my, I went over to the town hall, and I got a copy of the town charter, and I started reading it through, and there's a lot of things that have been amended, evidently. And I don't know what the amendments were, it was like a C8 or something, amended, period. Refer to something else. I'd like to see a copy, and I don't know if they're still available, of the original town charter as it was set up, because I think there's been a lot of changes just slipped in on that. And, I don't know, it seems like we're losing, we're losing our rights in this town, I'm sad to say. The other thing is, back to Wall Field. Take a ride from Guilford Line through to the intermediate school, the tennis courts, you've got one piece of open space on Route 80, and that's Wall Field. That's all we got in the center of town, and what's left of the green. And this is why I'm so adamant about saving it. You got stores from one end to the other, gas station stores, these frontier-looking shopping centers, that's about what you're going to get down there from what I saw the other day of this Wall Field thing. Take a look, because it's the last piece of open space for a park, or whatever, for recreation in the center of North Branford. Yeah, you've got a lot of land up on 22, and that is supposed to be the center of town, and it's probably a good idea. I'm not against it, because it's always been Northford, we're like two separate towns, always has been. I'll go back to my grandfather when he was Sluck Man, and he could tell you some stories. But bringing it together on 22, we're kind of equalizing. But Wall Field, I think we should keep for the center of North Branford. Northford's got the Parkway out on 17, and they got the schools down there in the center, I'm not sure what they got the other way, off the top of my head. And the other thing that irks me is this Route 80 widening. It's turned the center of North Branford into a speedway, and our North Branford finance ain't worth a damn. And we can't even get a decent 30 mile an hour sign. Up on 20, on 17, coming in from Durham into Northford, there's a big old yellow sign, 30 or 35 miles per hour. Our little 30, 35 mile per hour is hidden behind a Route 80 sign when you come down Route 80. Where is our police force?
Right here, and you're probably going to get a ticket.
Standing there with your hands in that pocket. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to make one more comment. I think when you see problems, and you need to write to the right people. I wrote to the Commissioner of Transportation about eight weeks ago, and I complimented on how, even though it's a speedway, like this gentleman said, by Church Street, by the church, is it Church Street? By the church, there's a section by the bridge that was all falling apart and depreciating, and there's holes, potholes. And I called, I wrote a page letter to the Commissioner of Transportation, and I told him that the road is depreciating, it's causing problems. I also told him about the arrows that are coming out of 22, going right and left and straight, which is no straight. But my point being here is, I wrote to him, and within four weeks, that street was paved over. So I compliment you for what you're saying, and your being outspoken, but Police Department, I've had services needed by them and the Fire Department, and they've been excellent. But I think if you, if you take the time to address the appropriate people, not just, you know, tell these folks up here that, you know, they're not doing, they're doing what they can within parameters of their responsibilities. But if you have to go above what's being a state road, then you call them, and you tell them you want a 30-mile speed limit. Will it happen? Who knows? But if you don't tell them, you invite that project, you're not going to get anywhere.
It's easier for me to tell and shoot my mouth than it is to write a letter for me, I'm not a letter writer.
All you got to do is just write a paragraph, write to the right person, write to the governor.
You're right.
Because it does work.
Thing is, that's a state road, doesn't the state mandate the 30 mile per hour on there?
And I'll tell you something else.
We're getting off like citizen statements and petitions, this isn't like Open Night Mike.
Okay, well, anyways, if you write to the right people, things get done.
So we're going to close citizen statements, and motion to move to executive session.
Second, do we have to invite certain people into executive session?
Yeah, we have to invite the assessor, and I believe Chickie as well.
I mean, yeah, David Ambrose you want to name as a candidate.
Dave Ambrose and Chickie.
The town manager.
Okay. Move by Counsel Angelo, and who was it seconded by?
Me. Whoever's one more than Diamond.
I'm sorry, cruel by Deputy Mayor Woodward, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roopa?
Mayor Navarro?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Capria?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Paulin?
Yes.
Counselor Ucic?